This government meeting is brought to you by Eastworks and our local cable subscribers.
Good evening. Good evening. Welcome to the East Hampton City Council meeting for Wednesday, November 15. The meeting tonight is being recorded and broadcast by eMedia on Charter Channel 193 and live streaming on their webpage, easthamptonmedia.org. Councilors or participants in these meetings are gathering hybrid. The order extended until March 2025, which allow us to do so. I remind both the member of the city council and the public participating remote remain mute under recognized by the city council president. Also, for the member of the public, please remove your camera for the duration of this meeting unless you are participating in the public speak time or public hearing. Thank you. This meeting is now called to order. Barbara.
Connie Denham, here. Salem Derby.
President.
Omar Gomez.
Here.
JP Kozinski.
Here.
Dave Munier. Tom Peak.
Here.
Brad Riley.
Here.
Dan Rist.
Here.
Owen Zara.
Here.
Please stand up for the pleasure of the living.
The United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I will take a motion to approve the minutes of November 1st, 2023.
From who?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the minute of November 1st, 2023. Barbara.
Connie Denham.
Aye.
Salem Derby.
Sorry, yes.
Your fault. Omar Gomez.
Aye.
JP Kozinski.
Aye.
Tom Peak.
Aye.
Brad Riley.
Abstain.
Dan Rist.
Aye.
And Owen Zara.
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you. Public speak time. This is the opportunity to address the council regarding any topic not listed on the public hearing. If you are here to participate for the resolution antisemitism, this is the time to address your comment or concerns or anything you have for the council. We're going to give you three minutes. Please state your name and address for the record and let's go there, to the podium.
I can't get in.
Can I close this computer?
Martha.
I don't think so.
Those guys.
Okay.
I'll just move it. Sorry, excuse me. Yep, nope, I understand.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, my name is Mortal Khan Kamel. I live at 359 Main Street, Unit 11B. I am here this evening to speak in favor of the resolution against antisemitism and to urge the council to vote in favor of it, although it is, I consider inadequate. I would also like to read a statement from my wife who couldn't be here tonight. Her name is Sarah Weinberger. Interestingly, she lives at the same address.
That's convenient.
I carry in my DNA generations of trauma, not only passed down from my parents who survived the Holocaust, but ancestors who survived pogroms in Poland, who were expelled from Spain during the Inquisition, who were slaughtered as Christ killers, held responsible for the bubonic plague. In short, my Jewish ancestors were targeted, tortured, and tormented because they were Jewish. Antisemitism continues to rear its ugly head as today people are called to account for the tragic deaths of children, women, and men in Gaza. We're painted with one broad brush as Zionist colonial settlers who are committing genocide. Again, Jews around the world are being scapegoated, collectively punished through the use of an age-old trope that ties every Jewish person to Israel. The slaughtering of Jewish babies, Holocaust survivors, and hundreds of young people, along with the taking of hostages and the sexual crimes committed by Hamas on October 7th, is largely ignored. While protesters in Hadley and Northampton glorify the terrorist group who slaughtered them, in Cold Blood and in Northampton ripped down posters of Israeli hostages put up by a member of our synagogue and his young son. The fear I experience today is an ancient and justified fear. Why do they hate us in every generation? Why am I being judged today for the sins of the Netanyahu regime, which I have never supported? I know that a resolution alone will not keep me safe, but it would be an affirmation of the humanity of your Jewish neighbors to make a statement that the city of East Hampton condemns antisemitism. It would be even better if this resolution were followed up with community education and programs that emphasize the humanity of all people, including Jews. I urge your council to vote in favor of the resolution, and I thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
My name is Frank Roberts. I live at 7 Fox Run in East Hampton. I am the president of Roberts Energy. I'm the vice chair of the Jewish Federation of Western Mass. I'm the assistant coach of the U-12 Travel Boys Soccer Team in town. Very important. But I'm here as a father, and I'm here for my family. I love my family. I love being Jewish, and I love this town. I've lived here since 2006, and I have received nothing but support from all of my friends and all of my neighbors. But today is a scary time, and what's happened in the last month has only made things scarier. I wrote an op-ed that was published in the Gazette about a few weeks ago. And a neighbor of mine read it, and he said, I was sort of blown away by that. And he said, it's not something that I think about. I can tell you the Jews today think about it all the time, and they're scared, and it's on their minds. And so I think this resolution is really important for this entire town, because I think it shows the city of East Hampton and our community that we will reject hatred. And if you aren't Jewish, maybe you don't think about it all the time, maybe you don't see it. But if we come out and we pass this resolution, it says that this town is a safe place for all of our community members. I think this is about American values. It's not just about antisemitism. I think it's about saying that we will not accept bigotry of any kind. And I think that if we pass this resolution, it says to all the residents of East Hampton that when you are hurting, we will stand up for you. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Bobby Nemark. My address is 102 Meadowbrook Road in Long Meadow, Massachusetts. And not only am I the donor impact officer for our local Jewish Federation of Western Massachusetts, which covers not only East Hampton, but as well as Hamden, Hampshire, and Franklin Counties, but I am a proud kippah-wearing Jew who lives here in Western Massachusetts. I had the privilege of walking and standing yesterday with 290,000 of my brothers and sisters and siblings in Washington, DC, for not only the march for Israel, but it was also a march to free the hostages that are being held against their will in Gaza and march against antisemitism. In light of the alarming resurgence of antisemitism globally, the introduction of this antisemitism resolution by council members Zaret for the city of East Hampton is not only timely, but crucial for fostering a community that stands firmly against hatred and discrimination. Recent weeks have witnessed a troubling increase in these anti-Semitic incidents, ranging from verbal attacks to acts of violence, underscoring the urgent need for proactive measures to combat prejudice and promote inclusivity. I fear not only for our rock-solid Jewish community that we have now built here in the city of East Hampton, but also for our local college students and their right to feel safe while on campus. According to a poll conducted by the Benison Strategy Group on behalf of Hilla International, the global Jewish student college organization, two out of three Jewish students say that they are constantly sad, and that 58% of them feel unsupported by their college, university, or their college town. By adopting this antisemitism resolution, and I am definitely in favor of this myself, East Hampton not only reaffirms its commitment to the principles of tolerance and diversity, but also sends a powerful message that hate has no place within its borders. Now, more than ever, it is essential for communities to take a stand against antisemitism, promoting unity and ensuring the protection of all residents, regardless of their religious or ethnic background. Unfortunately, with the spike in antisemitism recently throughout the world in the US and here in Hampshire County, my great-grandparents, who left Hungary and Lithuania during the Holocaust, never fulfilled their promise of providing for a better life for their family here in America. Never again is now. We are here, and I am here as a community member, to support this resolution and combat antisemitism through dialogue and growth. I hope that you will join not only me, but the entire community in our efforts to do what we need to do in order to keep the Jewish people alive and safe here. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
My name is Peter Steinberg. I live at 30 Reservation Road. I have been an East Hampton resident since 2007. I love this city. I love that there is such a vibrant Jewish community here and in adjoining towns. I do not know a single Jewish person who isn't horrified by what is happening in Gaza and the West Bank. I don't even know anyone who even likes Benjamin Netanyahu, much less agrees with the policies of his government. But I am alarmed by what appears to be a growing normalization of antisemitism in this country, a trend that appears to be driven by an overly simplistic reading of history and anthropology, a trend that would reduce all of us to the category of oppressor or colonizer. And that is a categorization that ignores thousands of years of discrimination and persecution. Last week, I heard Dana Bash on CNN say, "Historically, surges in antisemitism have been the canary in the coalmine for democracies that are about to fall apart." So I say to my elected representatives on the city council, you have an important opportunity here, not only to show that you have our backs, but also to demonstrate that you support democracy. Please do the right thing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, everyone. My name's Rachel Ahmed. My address is 7 Spring Street in East Hampton, and I've been a resident there for just under 18 years, and this is the first time I've ever spoken at public speak. But getting here was a bit of a struggle, and this is somewhat outside of my comfort zone, but I made it happen because what's in front of us tonight is of the utmost importance, not just to me, but I think to our entire community. And I'm here to speak in support of the council passing the resolution against antisemitism. It's easy to brush off incidents of antisemitism as things that only happen somewhere else, but those somewhere-else's are not far away, and every instance hurts not only Jews worldwide, but all people who wish to live among each other in peace with mutual respect for various belief systems. Since the October 7th massacre, the targeting of all Jews, regardless of their own levels of observance, regardless of their feelings about the current Israeli government, or even Israel in general, has gotten louder and frighteningly aggressive. I wanted to share with you some examples of how this has entered my circle of my loved ones. A friend of mine told me she no longer wears her Star of David necklace outside of the house for fear of being targeted. Daughter of another friend of mine began receiving antisemitic messages and comments on her online dating profile where she identifies as Jewish. I have twin daughters in their first year of college. Some of you know. One of them is in college in Boston, and she has a friend who was asked by her Uber driver if she was Jewish when she got in the car, and she felt so threatened and frightened, she felt compelled to lie and say no. My other daughter is in college in Washington, DC, and during the pro-Palestinian protests last weekend, one of her Jewish friends was so frightened and scared that she would be physically hurt that she spent all day Saturday locked in her dorm room. When my daughter told me that, I was very upset, both for her friend and also for my own daughter's safety, and I asked my daughter if she felt safe on campus, and she said she felt okay because she doesn't look Jewish. And I want you all to think about that for a minute, okay? This is in Washington, DC. This is not 1930's Europe. This is today, in Washington, DC, on a campus that is just a few blocks away. You can almost see the Holocaust Museum from her dorm. Kids are determining whether or not they look Jewish while assessing their risk for personal safety. And that just, I mean, I just froze when she said that to me. This is how real this has become. It's of the utmost importance that people speak out as much as possible about this quickly changing climate and draw attention to how dangerous it is. I also just want to address, there's a lot of confusion out there that to denounce antisemitism somehow means that one is making a direct comment regarding the war in Israel and saying they don't support Palestinians, and that isn't the case. Speaking out against antisemitism does not cancel out pro-Palestinian advocacy. It just means that you do not support hatred and targeting towards a minority group of people. With this resolution, you can publicly express that instances of antisemitism are not acceptable, are dangerous, and are an extreme departure from the moral code that you wish to uphold. I know I'm out of time. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm gonna take one more for now. Just one second. I'm gonna take one more now, because we have to do a public hearing, and after the public hearing, we're gonna continue with the public speak time. So one person now, and then we can continue after the public hearing.
Hello, I'm Laurie Garcia, 30, Holly Circle, and I'm gonna give a bit of a different perspective because when my friend Owen Zarrett contacted me last spring before the world turned upside down.
Laurie, can you please just talk to us?
Yes, I had many things. Sorry. I had many things that I wanted to say then, so my perspective is a little different. I have faced antisemitism my whole life, including while growing up in a Boston suburb and attending college in Vermont. When my family moved to East Hampton 30 years ago, I could count the other Jewish families in town on one hand. One such family, with whom we became close friends, relayed the problems they had with the elementary school administration when their sons felt excluded because of the insistence on celebrating only Christmas in the classroom. After hearing other concerns, we opted to send our own children to the Smith College Campus School, where we hoped they would not be marginalized. Nevertheless, we experienced true microaggressions over the years, especially when soccer jamborees in East Hampton were planned on Yom Kippur, our holiest day of the Jewish calendar. When I called to ask an organizer if the date for team pictures could be changed, I was told that wasn't possible. I was so thankful to my daughter's coach, who made the call herself to change the picture day, for she wanted her entire team to be included. Fall festivals were often planned on Rosh Hashanah, a Jewish New Year, and while working on a local committee for many years, I actually heard horrific antisemitic slurs from a fellow member who had no idea that I was Jewish. One of the reasons I chose to run for school committee six years ago was to help all feel included and promote respect for all religions and languages. I encountered other insensitivities while in that role, including a former high school diversity coordinator questioning me why a district-wide evening celebration of Hispanic Heritage Month should not have been scheduled on Yom Kippur. Last year, as an elected school committee member, I attended the statewide conventions of school committee members and superintendents from across the state. Last year's conference had a theme of diversity, equity, and inclusion. I was appalled to witness the exclusion of antisemitism in the keynote address with a list of all the other isms and marginalized groups that we must all work to protect in our schools. I got up at that conference, and I spoke to a room full of people to help them recognize the growing concerns of antisemitism and the marginalization of Jews in our schools and in our cities and in our towns. That was a year ago, when the hate crimes against Jews had grown to more than 60% of all groups, even though we are only 2% of the country's population. Today, the acts of antisemitism have grown 316% since that time, as recently reported by the Anti-Defamation League. I just want to say, I just have one quick paragraph. I am thankful for Councilor Zarrett for being at the forefront of this issue when he came before you last spring. Who would have known we would now be facing the most worldwide antisemitism since the Holocaust? It has passed from hurtful microaggressions to blatant hatred, including pamphlets from neo-Nazi groups being dropped in yards in our town, and swastik as in death to the Jews painted on Mount Tom. I thank you for considering this.
Thank you. Again, after the public hearing, we're gonna continue with the public speak time. I will take a motion to open public hearing.
Still moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to open public hearing. Any further discussion? CNN, Barbara.
Salem Derby.
Aye.
Omar Gomez.
Aye.
JP Kozinski.
President.
Tom Peak.
Aye.
Brad Riley.
Aye.
Dan Rist.
Aye.
Owen Zara.
Aye.
Connie Denham.
Aye.
Motion passes. Councilor Rist?
I'm gonna, we're gonna move past the tax classification to a CPA appropriation with the president's permission. It's an amount of $120,000 for a new city park, and I'd like to bring our assistant planner, Jamie, up to give us overview of this. It was passed by the CPA eight to zero, and it was passed by the finance committee three to zero.
Thank you. So as Dan said, this is a request to the city council to approve the $120,000 CPA expenditure for the New City Parks project. That New City Parks consists of two parks, one on Parsons Street, the Parsons Street Playground, which is an existing facility with a slide, sorry, a swing set, a trashcan, and a Valley Bike Share Station. And the Lincoln Street Parcel, which is a vacant parcel, it was carved off from the old Parsons Street School. It's the back lot. It was used as the bus turnaround and parking. When the city surplus the school, we retained that back parcel for some future recreational facility, and we are now with a state, excuse me, with the state budget earmark of $100,000. Combined with the CPA appropriation, we'll be able to go forward with design development to fully enhance the recreational opportunities for New City residents. It's one of the most deprived, has the least amount of public recreation open space in the city, and we're trying to create new spaces, new recreational opportunities for residents in the area.
Aye. Appreciate that, and I just want to say that New City deserves playgrounds. What they have is horrific, and we're renovating that entire area, so this is very welcome. The CPA committee was very enthusiastic supporting this. I don't know, councilors have any questions?
Any councilor have any questions, comments before Councilor Riley?
Sure, just one comment. So I don't have the research with me, but I'm welcome to share it with any of you or members of the public. So I have learned in my studies that proximity to public parks reduces crime, it reduces public health crises, and increases test scores in schools, all of the things that we would want to move forward on in our community. So, you know, any opportunity that we get to spread parks around to the different neighborhoods in East Hampton beyond recreation, there are all of these external chain reaction events that benefit the community. So I think this is a really wonderful idea.
Thank you, councilor. Any other councilor? Councilor Zarrett?
Thank you. I've had my eye on this parcel for probably as long as I've been on the council. We had identified it as a potential use, parcel for use when we started the Dog Park Project five-ish years ago, and we eliminated it pretty quickly for a variety of reasons, but particularly because there was the benefits of redesigning that space and reusing that space for a variety of community uses far outweighed the potential for a dog park. And that still, I still believe that. In many ways, Precinct Two in New City has a deep, deep history within the soul of the city, because traditionally where all the people who worked at the factories that fed and built this town worked and walked over, now a gone pedestrian bridge. And so I think that for a variety of reasons, it's up to us to reinvigorate and put a little bit of soul back into that area of town, and so I'm very excited to not only support this, but to see where this goes.
Councilor Derby?
Thank you, Mr. President. Councilor Kozinski and I actually worked on this particular parcel back when we were both on property years ago, and I think that, you know, seeing this finally come to fruition is hardening. You know, this was something that we had high hopes for, and sometimes you have to be patient, but I really think that this is a great use of that piece of property that we, you know, had kind of envisioned something really great happening many years ago. So I'm really glad that this is able to come forward, so I appreciate that.
Thank you. Councilor Denham?
I'm also very excited about this opportunity. I think, one thing I think is important to recognize is that for our young people, they are participating less and less in organized sports and things like that, and so this is an opportunity for them to come together and build community in a safe, in a safe place, a part of their own community where they don't have to travel anywhere, et cetera. And so I think that this is an added benefit to the development of young people.
Thank you. Any other councilors? Before the public, I just want to say that I represent Precinct Two. I'm glad that this is happening. A little too late, but it's happening. Usually that happened, and not blaming the people who works in the city, but usually it's really, really slow when we're doing some stuff for the poor community, and New City is one of the poorest ones. But finally, we can see light on the tunnel, so I'm glad that this is happening. I hope the next time when we're dealing with the poor communities in our city, we can move a little faster, because they need it, and they need us. Anyone from the public, they want to say or make a comment or have a question about this particular public hearing? Anyone online? Councilor Rist?
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that a full council approve the supplemental appropriation request from the Community Preservation Act. The amount requested is $120,000 to be appropriated fund from the CPA Reserve for Open Space Account, $9,548. The CPA Undesignated Fund, $110,452, for a total of $120,000. To be appropriated to the New City Parks Account, $120,000 for the purpose of the complete design development for the rehabilitation of the existing Parsons Street Playground and the creation of a new recreation facility at the vacant Lincoln Street Park Parcel.
Second.
I have a motion and a second for the CPA supplemental appropriation of $120,000 for the complete design of development rehabilitation of the Parsons Street Playground and creation of, and new creation facility of the vacant Lincoln Street Park Parcel. Any further discussion? Councilor Kozinski?
I just wanted to add my voice to this. I appreciate Councilor Derby you bringing this up, and it certainly heartens me to see the vision that many people had, and we in particular, because there were several pressures on us for development of the site in variety of different ways, and we held firm. And I think it's because the area was the poorest section of the city. It has historically been such. It is such. Why shouldn't there be a beautiful park there? Why shouldn't we contribute to it? Why shouldn't everyone from the entire city be able to share in it, along with the folks who look out their backyards and see it? Thank you so much for making this happen.
Any other councilor? CNN, Barbara?
Omar Gomez.
Aye.
JP Kozinski.
Aye.
Tom Peak.
Aye.
Brad Riley.
Aye.
Dan Rist.
Aye.
Owen Zara.
Aye.
Connie Denham.
Aye.
Salem Derby.
Aye.
Motion passes. Councilor Rist?
Now we move to the tax classification hearing. Our principal assessor is here to
Counselor Rist?
Now we move to the tax classification hearing. Our principal assessor is here to give us a little education on this. Just for the record, the finance committee approved this three to zero, and nothing has changed in the 27 years that I've been on the council. We classify business, commercial property, and private property the same.
Let's see, okay, just want to make sure.
Yeah, but her position?
She is the principal assessor.
Yes, Martha Lee, me, principal assessor. Hi, thank you, good evening. For those of you who don't remember, you elected me, voted me, appointed me, yes. So.
All of them.
So as Counselor Rist mentioned, we're here for the tax classification. This happens every single year at this time of the year in every single community. It happens only before the tax rate is set and only after the values are certified by the Department of Revenue, and I am here on behalf of the Board of Assessors to present to you, the city council, the several options for distributing the tax levy among taxpayers under property tax classification. Use of these options results in multiple tax rate for different property classes because they change the components used to calculate the tax rate, i.e., the amount of the tax levy being paid, or the assessed valuation of the class. Overall, the total levy stays the same. Sorry, I should have changed that first. The options the council must decide is to opt for a single tax rate or a split tax rate. There's also an open space discount, a residential exemption, and a small commercial exemption that they must vote on. And it's important to understand how the tax rate is set. The city councils row, they appropriate, appropriations are voted by city council. Coming up with the total raised by taxation, and these are last year's figure, so last year's tax rate is included, and you come up with a total amount to be raised by taxation. Separately, the assessors develop values based on actual sales within the town using calendar year, the previous one or two years before the fiscal year. The values, like I had mentioned earlier, are reviewed and approved by the Department of Revenue, and when you have the amount raised by taxation divided by the total valuation of all real and personal property, you get the tax rate. And a single or split tax rate, that is the question. So city council must decide to tax all classes at their full and fair tax, full and fair cash valuation share of the tax levy, which would be using a factor of one. This results in a single rate, or they can decide to reduce the share of the tax levy paid by the residential property owners and shift the tax rate, shift the taxes to the commercial, industrial, and personal property taxpayers, which results in a split rate, and the maximum amount is a 1.5 factor. With residential properties making up 88% of our tax levy, and community, commercial, industrial, and personal property being 12%, it does not make sense to shift the burden to the commercial, industrial, and personal property. And these are just some examples of what the tax rate would look like. And again, these are just hypothetical, this is not where our tax rate will be, we haven't even finalized it. The Board of Assessors recommends using a factor of one, which will keep a single tax And these are just some historical tax rates for the past seven years. 1465 was our FY 65, and back in 2017, as you can see, 1621 was the tax rate. And our percentage of the levy has only gone up 1% for residential, and down one for commercial, industrial, personal property. And these are just some neighboring communities for their last year FY 23 tax rate for single family homes. As I mentioned, East Hampton was 1465 with an average single family home value of 342,291, an average single family tax bill of $5,015. We had 4,055 single family parcels with the total residential levy of 27,234,958. Now, these are the three options that the city council must decide. If they want to adopt an open space discount, which we do not have any properties classified as open space, and out of the 351 municipalities, there's only 16 that classify property as open space, with only one adopting an open space discount. So the Board of Assessors cannot recommend, because we do not have that open space classification. Residential exemption. This can be granted to all residential properties that are the principal resident of the taxpayer. It is a fixed dollar amount that's excluded from the valuation of each owner occupied residence for tax purposes, and it may not exceed 35% of the average assessed valuation of all residential properties. Again, it does not change the total taxable value for residential properties. It would shift the tax burden from lower value owner occupied homes to higher owner occupied and rental properties. And if you notice the communities, there are 18 out of 351 that have adopted the exemption, and they are all on the east coast, Eastern Mass, and Cape and the Islands. And the Board of Assessors does not recommend adopting a residential exemption, because the majority of our properties are owner occupied. And lastly, the small commercial exemption. The city council may grant the small commercial exemption of no more than 10% of the assessed value of each eligible commercial property, but only if the business has an annual average employment of no more than 10 people, as certified by the Department of Employment and Training, and the valuation of the property must be less than 1 million. If adopted, it would shift the tax dollars from the small businesses to the remaining larger businesses, and it is important to note that this does not benefit the small business, only the owner of the property. And if you have one of our strip malls, all of the businesses within the strip mall has to qualify under those conditions. And in FY 23, there were only 14 communities who adopted the small commercial exemption, and they were all out on Central and Eastern Mass. And that concludes my presentation, and if there's any questions?
Do you want to add something else? All I want to add is thank you. We haven't had a presentation like this in the past, because it's usually been pretty straightforward.
Yes.
You don't want a split rate, and the other discounts have never been asked for. But this doesn't just inform the council, it informs the public, so thank you, Martha.
You're very welcome.
And I have no other questions, but.
And this was approved three to zero?
Three to zero by the finance committee.
Thank you. Any counselor have any? Counselor Peak?
Yeah, I would just also echo, I feel like this is probably what my, my fifth or sixth time hearing this presentation, but I feel like the, just the way that it's laid out, I feel like I understand it more, like, I feel like I understand it on a deeper level than I previously did, from the way that the information had been presented to us in the past. So I really do appreciate that sort of thing, so thank you.
You're welcome. I just would like to add that the, in the screen where we went over how we come to the tax rate, how the city council and the assessor work independently, and that we do not base our values based on what kind of money the city needs. And I think that's important to recognize, that it's only based on sales, and if you improve your property in any way, that might increase the value. And if anybody has any questions about the property valuation, please just stop in or call the assessor's office, because I think an informed public is important.
What is the number?
My number is, oh goodness, 529-1400, extension assessor's office. I am so sorry, I am so sorry. I haven't yet memorized it.
Counselor Riley?
Yeah, I just wanted to say thank you, Martha. I know when we went through this appointment process together, I emphasized that I rely on city professionals to explain these things, so that way I can make informed decisions. And this is really complex stuff that I wouldn't have ever understood if I tried to figure it out on my own. So the way that you've presented this in a way allows me to understand what the options are, and to be able to visualize in my head how some of them are not helpful at all. And I don't know that I would have gotten to that conclusion on my own, so I thank you for that. And just a quick thank you also to all of the professionals that work in PACE and AV. They make our jobs so much more easier to be able to have presentations like this, so thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other counselor? Counselor Kozinski?
Martha, I just wanted to say thank you again, add my voice to that. I've heard this a few times, in the number of years.
Every year.
And each time, each time, including tonight, there are always twists and turns and different things that come up that we look at again differently, which means a lot to us, and I hope to the members of the community that get to see this presentation and help to understand how we make the decisions we do. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone from the public have any questions or comment? Please go to the podium, go to the podium and please state your name and address for the record again, please.
Don't go away.
Oh, no.
Mordechai Kamel, 359 Main.
Do you have any idea why the towns in Eastern Massachusetts and the Cape are using those alternatives?
The residential exemption is because there are, well, think of Martha's Vineyard, where you have your locals that work in the restaurants, that, you know, work in city, Town Hall, and you have million dollar homes that, like I said, sales affect values. So if you have a residential exemption in communities that have a large rental population or extreme high values, it gives them a break. And it's not in every Cape community and every Eastern Mass community, but it just gives them a break. It doesn't work, I know you hear that residential exemption, we can adopt it, but in a community like ours in Western Mass, it would just shift it to higher valued homes, and we're getting there. I'm sorry to say, we're getting there. But yeah, it just wouldn't, it wouldn't be fair. You would have divide.
Thank you. Anyone else? Anyone online? CNN Counselor Rist?
Mr. President, I move that the city of East Hampton set a factor of one for the fiscal year 2024 tax rate, keeping a single tax rate for all classes of property, and do not grant an open space discount, nor a residential exemption, nor a small commercial exemption, as recommended by the Board of Assessors and the Finance Committee.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to set the fiscal year 2024 tax classification. Any further discussion? CNN Barbara?
JP Kozinski.
Aye.
Tom Peak.
Aye.
Brad Riley.
Aye.
Dan Rist.
Aye.
Owen Zara.
Aye.
Connie Denham.
Aye.
Salem Derby.
Aye.
Omar Gomez.
Aye. Motion passes. Counselor Rist?
We have a Security Preservation Act appropriation request of $878,000. This is for City Space's Old Town Hall renovation. As you recall, counselors, they came to us for what they called Phase Two, which was the construction of an accessible elevator, providing accessibility not only to the new third, second floor, but to the entire building. Unfortunately, as demonstrated by the Jones Library $10 million increase, inflation has done a job on the numbers and costs for the Phase Two. This was caused primarily by supply and inflation, but also because a lot of the contractors who, subcontractors who would have worked on the project failed to bid, so the general contractor had to put in numbers to account for that. This increased the cost of the project Phase Two by 1.4 million dollars. So City Space came to CPA for help. The CPA committee enthusiastically supported this after two meetings of discussion. It's important to note that when this was set out to bid and discovered that it would require new funding, the CPA, the City Space was able to get their match. They had to match, bring matching funds, or they couldn't go out to bid. So they did the work to get the funds, and they have guaranteed the CPA committee and the city council, and the city council finance committee, that they will get their match for this particular request. If the CPA committee also discussed this, that if we didn't do it now, it wouldn't get done, because costs would simply go up. If it's done and this elevator appears, it will spur more donations to finish the project in Phase Three. CPA budget process puts, put $250,000 in a retained city match account for Old Town Hall each year, and there's 120-some thousand in historic preservation. Those funds, along with $500,000 and $6,000 in, in the undesigned funds, would be deducted from the bond availability. What do I mean by that? $3.5 million was appropriated by this council, 1.5 million in cash and 2 million for bonding. Every time we decide to use cash rather than bonding, it is deducted from that 2 million. In other words, it doesn't increase the funding you've approved. It stays at 3.5 million. It means the next time they come, there will only be, after this, 872,000 left in bonding availability from the 3.5 million. I have budget figures if you'd like to see that. What else? So from a personal point of view, I have been always strongly in favor of this. They're at a crossroads now. If City Space doesn't fund this now, I don't believe this project will fly, because it'll just get more expensive. And they assure, they have to come up with $584,805 to match the 878 that we are asking for appropriations. Again, the CPA committee approved this eight to zero enthusiastically, and the Finance Committee approved it three to zero. President of City Space, Burns Maxi, is here to improve on my remarks and answer your
Thank you, Counselor, and counselors. I appreciate the support. My name is Burns Maxi. I'm the president, a volunteer-run organization, City Space, which manages the Old Town Hall. I live right down the street at 86 Walliston Avenue, so I appreciate you having this meeting so close to my home. Yes, indeed, we are asking for additional funds. Actually, we're not asking for additional funds for this project, we're asking for funds to be released that have already been approved by the city council for this phase. This is an imperative part of the project. It creates accessibility to all floors of the building, from the basement to the balcony, and for the first time in the building's 154-year history, this will make the second floor accessible. This does not finish the project, but it gets it to the next step, and that's really important. I will say that a donor has come to us to say, I've never given you any money, ever, but I want to give you $10,000. I have more to give to you, but I want to see this portion of the project happen. And that has happened time and time again, and that's one of the reasons why we broke out the project into three phases. We said it's going to cost a little more over time, it's not going to be like the Amherst Library or some friends over the mountain that have a theater over there that's gotten much higher than 47 million it started out as, I think. This is going to be a little bit more. We started at a $6.6 million project, and it's going to be over $10 million when we're through with it. But what it's going to do for this city is, it's going to change Main Street, it's going to create jobs, it's going to have over 350 people and more walking out its doors. It's going to have over 350 people and more walking out its doors, spending their money at, hopefully, as we have about eight empty storefronts on Main Street right now, they will be filled. And people will be going to the restaurants there, they will be spending their dollars, and it'll be going back into the local economy. Furthermore, there is this great project you talked about earlier about a playground and where it's located. And so having programming for City Space that gives access to artists who make mostly low-income levels of income, that they can access the space for free. We've given over, let me see here, over 1,200 hours of free space this year. We've had over 10,000 people walk out the doors of City Space. We've had over 130 shows. This is an active place already. When we have the second floor built, it's going to be even more. This is the in-between state, and we would like to go out to bid next year. It's going to be important to do this, because as Counselor Rist said, the faster we do this, it's not going to cost as much in the end. If we could do it all at once, if you would like to release all the funds right now, we could, we could move forward. But I understand that we're doing it phase by phase, and this is the best way forward.
Thank you.
Yes.
Any councilors have any questions or comment? Counselor Denham?
No, I just, I had a great conversation with you the other morning. It was fabulous, and I just want to emphasize the vision that you have in terms of bringing cultural life to Main Street and a nightlife, generating income for our local businesses. And so I just want to commend you, not just on the project, but the vision of that project and what it does for East Hampton. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone from the public have any questions or comments about this appropriation? Stan, you're not waiting for this, right? You're waiting for something else? Okay. Counselor Rist?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just one last comment. We entertain bonding instead of taking money out of our cash, and our treasurer told us that that would be extremely costly, and a small $500,000 bond is just not feasible. At least, it would, it would cost the CPA funds a great deal. I just wanted you to know that. So I move that the full council approve a supplemental appropriation request from the Community Preservation Act. The amount requested is $878,000. To be appropriated from, the CPA Reserve for Historic Preservation, 121197. The CPA Undesignated Fund, $506,803. And the Old Town Hall Construction Retained City Match, $250,000, for a total of 878,000. To be appropriated to, the Old Town Hall Second Floor Construction Project Account, $878,000. For the purpose of additional funds for the Phase Two construction of a new ADA accessible entrance and elevator for Old Town Hall.
Second. I have a motion and a second for the CPA supplemental appropriation of $878,000, additional for Phase Two construction of new ADA accessible entrance and elevator at Old Town Hall. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Barbara.
Tom Peak.
Aye.
Brad Riley.
Aye.
Dan Rist.
Aye.
Owen Zarrett.
Aye.
Connie Denham.
Aye.
Salem Derby.
Aye.
Omar Gomez.
Aye.
JP Kuzinski.
Aye.
Motion pauses.
I just want to, one moment, Mr. President. Thank my fellow councilors. This project has meant a lot to me, and what I've done with the CPA has meant so much to me. Thank you.
I will take a motion to close public hearing.
Thank you.
I have a motion and a second to close public hearing. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Barbara.
Brad Riley.
Aye.
Dan Rist.
Aye.
Owen Zarrett.
Aye.
Connie Denham.
Aye.
Salem Derby.
Aye.
Omar Gomez.
Aye.
JP Kuzinski.
Aye.
Tom Peak.
Aye.
Motion pauses. Now, we're going back to public speak time. For those one who didn't say anything yet, this is the opportunity again to go to the podium. Stan, I know you're waiting there. I'm going to let people on the room first, and then you go on, okay? Good. Go to the podium. State your name and address for the record. You have three minutes.
Mike Goffner, 56 Hopbrook Road, Amherst, Massachusetts. The East Hampton City Council has an opportunity tonight to distinguish itself remarkably and profoundly by approving Counselor Zarrett's resolution on antisemitism. As a Jewish husband and father, I cannot even begin to articulate the profound fear with which Jewish families across the country live, including in East Hampton and all of the Pioneer Valley. We literally now fear for our lives, now our children's lives, every day. I'm a resident of Amherst and a huge fan of East Hampton. I love in particular Small Oven Bakery and the Zing Table Tennis Facility. I also write for The Times of Israel, and I want to be open and candid about the fact that I might write about Counselor Zarrett's resolution and the city council's vote on it, and I don't want anyone to feel that there was a journalist covering the process without identifying themselves as such. In anticipation of some possible resistance to the resolution, I want to make clear that Counselor Zarrett's resolution in no way picks a side in the ongoing Israel-Hamas war, nor does it in any way diminish or preclude any sentiments expressed about other forms of bigotry, including but not limited to Islamophobia. It is a feature of antisemitism that many people feel the need to qualify or amend statements about antisemitism with questions or comments such as, what about Islamophobia? What about the Palestinians? So I ask you, when local governments have made statements about Black Lives Matter or anti-Asian hate, have there been qualifications and amendments? I also ask you, what books have you read on antisemitism? I suggest that if you have not read even one of the following, you are not well qualified to dispute the value and importance of Counselor Zarrett's resolution. People Love Dead Jews by Dara Horn. We Need to Talk About Antisemitism by Rabbi Diana Fursko. Antisemitism Here and Now by Deborah Lipstadt. Jewish Pride by Ben Freeman. Jews Don't Count by David Baddiel. All of these books came out well before October 7, 2023. If you are not knowledgeable about antisemitism, meaning having read at least one serious book on the topic, I posit that you cannot credibly vote against Counselor Zarrett's resolution. Ask yourselves, should someone with zero knowledge of zoning and residential development vote on a zoning proposal or 40B development? Should someone with no knowledge of Massachusetts' municipal finance vote on a proposition two and a half operating override or debt exclusion? Should someone without knowledge of MGH Chapter 59 complain about why East Hampton cannot simply raise more tax revenue? The literature on contemporary antisemitism has been growing, because many of us have seen this burgeoning trend for years, just waiting for a catalyst to explode and spread like COVID, which has now happened. By supporting Counselor Zarrett's resolution, East Hampton will distinguish itself magnificently by taking a firm stand on an issue that shouldn't be controversial, but somehow often is viewed as such, simply because the relevant people are Jews, and as David Baddiel says, Jews don't count.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Hello, everybody. Good evening. My name is John Viallis, and I live at 83 Lindberg Boulevard in Westfield, Massachusetts. I am here in strong support of the resolution tonight on antisemitism. And I just want to be very clear where I'm coming from, and I want to state I am not Jewish. I am not Israeli, because I think it's really, 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 really critical for folks to know when they're feeling the way that they are. And I think we've heard from multiple folks here tonight, and I certainly have come across many people that truly feel a sense of being scared, being in uncharted, unprecedented times, and I think it's absolutely imperative that we, who are not Jewish, stand up and say, we got you, and anybody, in any form of hatred, we condemn in the harshest, harshest of terms. My real reason being here for tonight is about, three months ago, the end of July, I was in Israel, and I had the absolute experience of a lifetime to visit Yad Vashem Museum, which is the Holocaust museum in Israel. And I went there not knowing what to expect, otherwise, other than knowing that I was probably going to be pretty sad, pretty confused, pretty horrified. But I didn't expect the feelings that, to be very honest with you, I struggle to articulate. And I have an almost-two-year-old son named Carson. And when I was going through the different, it's kind of set up in a really unique way, the way you walk around it, but I sat there and I watched people, fellow human beings, being brought deliberately and systematically to their deaths in gas chambers. Six million fellow human beings. Many of them, under false pretenses, were told to go into these gas chambers and killed, annihilated. And I don't know how to explain that type of hatred to my almost-two-year-old son. I don't know how to do it. I don't want to do it. I hope when he's at the age to retain this information. I don't have to tell him about that. On that same trip, I visited a place called Kfar Azza, which is a kibbutz right near Gaza. It was one of the last kibbutzes that had Hamas operatives in it on October 7. A lot of babies killed, a lot of people targeted because of who they were, nothing more. Civilians. I've been to war. It's not pretty. What happened on October 7 wasn't war. That was a deliberate killing of people because who they are. And I just think it's really, really important, when fellow human beings are being brought down and condemned, and we have this antisemitism that is truly the longest hatred, the oldest hatred in the history of this world. It is imperative that we step up and say, no, enough is enough, never again. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Senator. Anyone else from the room? Seeing none. Stan?
Thank you, Counselor. You can hear me, right?
Yes. Really loud.
My name is Stan Shapiro. I live at 139 Vernon Street in North Hampton, and I'm here to speak in support of the resolution against antisemitism originated by Counselor Zarrett. I'm currently the co-president of Congregation Bene Israel in North Hampton. Our community consists of over 500-member families and many other friends, and many of our members live in East Hampton, as do my daughter and her family as well. Hate crimes targeting Jewish Americans have been on the rise for the last few years. According to the Department of Justice, hate crimes related to race, ethnicity, and ancestry in Massachusetts rose by 36% from 2020 to 2022 and are the largest category of hate crimes. Hate crimes related to religion increased by 42% from 2020 to 22 and are the second-largest category. Nationally, according to the FBI, antisemitic hate crimes rose 25% between 2021 and 22 and accounted for more than half of all religious-based reported hate crimes. Those statistics refer to the period before October 7. Since the attacks on Israel by Hamas, on others, and the invasion of Gaza, we've seen a huge upsurge worldwide and in the U.S. of antisemitic threats and incidents. While individuals may disagree or have varying views about the conflict, criticism of Israel around the world has awakened longstanding antisemitic tropes and bias. The threat is real, and members of our community are feeling increasingly vulnerable. Many are anxious even about everyday actions, such as dropping off their children at religious school or going to religious services. This resolution, though largely symbolic, takes a strong stand and sends a strong message and goes a long way towards making our community feel supported and heard in this very troubling time. Thank you.
Thank you, Stan. Anyone else? Seeing none. Communication from elected officials, boards and committee. Counselor Rist?
Yes, I have a comment tonight, and I usually don't make them. Maybe it's the courage of knowing I won't be here in January. I know you all hoped that I would go quietly into the night, but I have an issue which I'm asking the new council and school committee, the new school committee, to deal with during the budget process. I usually do not go into school department business, but I must now. During the finance hearings on the budget, President Gomez and Counselor Denham questioned why the English-as-a-second-language, or ESL, program was being cut. We were assured before voting on the budget that it would be discussed this summer. Unfortunately, I've come to find out that there is no ESL faculty member at the high school this semester, with the one that was there transferring to Mountain View. So there are students whose first language is not English having difficulty learning now at the high school. Even more disturbing, the diversity-inclusion liaison position was cut to half-time with no benefits. This caused the former DIL officer to leave as it was not affordable. Apparently, it was grant-funded, the second half of the position. This position greatly assisted students of color in high school LGBTQ community, acting as an ombudsman when they needed someone to speak for them to the administration. This position greatly helped with building an environment of inclusion. In 2016, the AG's office, that's the state attorney general's office, required this position to be in place and full-time. Required it, not recommend it. I know Counselor Derby and Counselor Kuzinski remembered the disturbing cause for which this was part of a 10-point plan to rid the high school of discrimination and unfair discipline to students of color. Both of these situations must be rectified, councilors. Please use the power of the budget to influence our new school committee to take immediate action in January. Don't wait until May to have it again rear its ugly head. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Zarrett?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just briefly, as many of you clearly know, we'll be taking up business shortly on this resolution against antisemitism, but I just want to address some of the members of the community and constituents who have reached out to speak their concerns about the also precipitous rise of Islamophobia, certainly historically over the last 10 years and with recent events in the Middle East. Hate of all forms has no place here. We have systematically, at least on my time on the council and before, addressed the variety of forms of hate. They all deserve their own space to be discussed. Tonight, we're discussing antisemitism, but I do feel strongly, for a variety of reasons, being a person of the Abrahamic tradition and a human being, that we also must strongly have developed a plan to address Islamophobia as well. I've already started conversations with members of that community. I plan to start working on that next. I certainly invite anyone who's interested in that topic to reach out, and I'm always happy to collaborate with other councilors. So I just wanted to make that clear for the members of the public that I've reached on that topic. You are heard and you are seen, and we will be reaching out our hearts and minds to you as well.
Counselor Denham?
I don't want to repeat things that people have said. I think there's two issues tonight that we're talking about that certainly need to be addressed, that we have a responsibility within this community to make people feel welcome, provide a sense of belonging, and certainly provide educational opportunities to help people build awareness. So I support the efforts tonight, and both in terms of Counselor Zarrett's resolution and the comments of Chair Rist, which we tried to address earlier in the year. And I apologize to change subjects, but this is the only time I can speak. I just want to remind people that we have a municipal leadership academy that we're starting, and that will take place in, starting in January. It's a 10-week program for people to learn about city governance, learn about the various offices of the city, and learn about the budgeting process. So people often are not sure how the budget process happens, they're not sure about various departments. This is an opportunity to learn about that and put people in direct contact with agency or department directors. And more importantly, it's an opportunity to learn about the various councils and committees and things of that nature that people can get involved in, which is so important, since so much of what we do is volunteer-based, but it's a great, for people who are nervous or aren't sure, it's an opportunity to kind of build people's confidence. And so want to extend that invitation to people to sign up for that. It's on the city webpage. There's an application process, just to kind of talk about why you're interested in this and what you would hope to get out of it. So that's on the city website, and the application dead- So that's on the city website, and the application deadline, I think, is, I'm drawing a blank right now, everything that's been said, I think, December 21st, but hope that people will consider that. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other counselor? Seeing none. Mayor's communication. Mayor Letu Bell?
Thank you, Mr. President. I have an addendum to what Counselor Denham has just said. Our assessor was excited about what you said and the policy, and I said, of course, city employees are welcome to go as well, so she might be the first sign-up. Yeah, so. And I say that to all the other city employees that are elected. So I, one, you know, there's a lot of somnusquatuodous as far as commending a counselor bringing a resolution about historical, just systematic campaign to wipe out a certain culture and religion. I wish I could say it was the only one, but also it is stunning, what recent, even before October 7th and what we saw with events against religious and cultural Jews. That said, I've really thought a lot about, I've spent time in Israel, I've been in Palestine, I have a lot of friends over there right now, and it's something that I personally think a lot about, but really have gone back and forth about what, how to respond as a mayor. Really struggled with it and struggled with it during this meeting, going back and forth. We've been in these difficult conversations before, and I have reacted not always in the way people want me to, or I have done enough, or I have sat down in the middle of policy and bureaucracy and process. And as a mayor, I think that is my job. That's what I got elected to do. And in this case, or this instant, and listening to a lot of stuff coming in and out of my office and around the country with other mayors, a first step that is directly linked to October 7th and also the antisemitic activity we have had and kind of settled down and went away, and of course it didn't, and it's back, and that was before October 7th. This is, this is very, it's insidious. So that said, I spoke with the police chief about where we were around our statistics and what our policies look like or whatnot, and we found out that when they researched our hate crime policy, it was really outdated, and we had last done it over actually around 2020, and so much has changed. So I just want to read this quick explanation to the hate policy and civil rights policy that, brand-new, that will go public tomorrow. Addressing hate, pain, and violence in a community, whether it is local or international, is an intense conundrum. Tragically, we do not have to look far for examples. What is a city's response within our municipal structure and home rule charter? That's the question a mayor asks every single day. The recent words of historian Yuval Noah Bahari gave me context as a mayor. If you have not read any of this man's amazing work, he's a Jewish historian and philosopher, please do, regardless of your thoughts on what is going on in the Middle East, it's just profound, profound. And he said outsiders who are not themselves immersed in pain should make an effort to empathize with all suffering humans rather than lazily seeing only a part of the terrible reality. It is the job of outsiders to help maintain a space for peace. His guidance brought me back to the city's undoing racism workshops for members of the community and also city officials, where we were educated about inherent bias and unforeseen but intentional violence against BIPOC populations. We came to understand that these populations were oppressed, weren't in need of our help to understand what was happening to them, but needed our space and our work to support The next step for our government was to make space and take down barriers by reckoning with our policies in public statements. We are still doing this work. I think we've done, out of undoing racism, maybe, I don't know, an eighteenth of a centimeter of the work we need to do, policies. The thing of what's going on now just broadens the expanse of the work that has to be done and how it is in no one place, but is in all places. So with the frightening rise in hate crime, I asked the police chief to research and update our policies, and the resulting policy expands what is defined and investigated as hate, provides clear response guidance to our officers, and a transparent enforcement policy for our residents. East Hampton is a place where hate should find no harbor, yet acknowledging the reality, we understand that we do not entirely prevent it from emerging within our borders, and we cannot ignore it. It is crucial for the public to know that the city's policy towards act of hate is unequivocally wrong, is unequivocal. This revision is just one step to reinforcing our commitment to combating hate while ensuring the safety and well-being of all residents. This is one of many steps we have taken, but many more we need to take. I only hope that maybe someday our world will find a shared peace, and until then, we will always commit to making space in East Hampton. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Correspondents' announcement for the president or vice president. And Counselor Derby, you have something?
I do not. Thank you, Mr. President.
I have two. One is, I want to say thank you to the DPW. We got an email a couple days ago about trash in one of the playgrounds and center schools. They clean it, they pick up all the trash, or now that playground is good to, for the kids to use it again. I just want to congratulate all the new elected officials. That was a really contented election, and I want to congratulate all the people that got elected. Reporter of Standards Committee, Finance, Counselor Rist?
Yes, Mr. President. We will meet, if the councils are available, on the 29th of the month, that's Wednesday at 5:15 in Room 1, a hybrid meeting, to discuss the one piece of new business, and I hope to get a quarterly fiscal report if our auditor is back in town. So the 29th, which is two weeks from now. Thank you, Mr. President.
Public Safety, Counselor Zaret?
Thank you, Mr. President. We met yesterday. The, only two items we discussed were roadway infrastructure and pedestrian safety items. Counselor Derby and I were present, Counselor Munier was absent. We mostly had a conversation about the ongoing project on Route 10. Thank you to the DPW for obtaining that, to the mayor's office and all other stakeholders. And we discussed the proposed resolution against antisemitism, which, thank you for people speaking about that today. We made a few adjustments to that. The text was sent, the text was sent to the council last night with text in red to indicate the new amendments and changes to that, as well as all the supplementary materials. I have written an introduction from myself that I would like to speak into the record if possible. If that's okay with you, Mr. President. Why do people hate Jews? My name is Owen Zaret. My grandfather was Irving Zaretzky from Petrikov, Russia, modern-day Belarus. His family was murdered by Cossacks in a pogrom while he was away on an errand. He was 14. His two youngest sisters were hidden in a laundry basket. He made his way to Germany, escaped literally a day before a roundup of Jews, made his way to New York, worked on the docks, fought with people who called him a dirty Jew, worked in a department store doing displays, and eventually opened his own kosher butcher shop. Unlike the urban legend we were told, he actually legally changed his name to Zaret, like thousands of other immigrants through the New York courts, trying to hide his identity and gain some acceptance as an American. The Blox, the Faders, Zimmerman's, the Gellers, all of my other ancestors were lucky to escape in the 1880s when there was a brief pause of expulsions and pogroms. The rest are statistics. Killed in pogroms, shot in firing squads, gassed in concentration camps. If they were lucky, they were held in Russia, unable to leave and hold any meaningful position. In the early 1900s, 60% of the world's Jewish population lived in Europe. Two-thirds of those were murdered in the Holocaust. The total world population today is still being less than it was pre-Holocaust. Why do people hate Jews? This followed the historical exile of Jews from Israel in the first millennium. The diaspora in Europe formed in the second millennium, mostly due to persecution and expulsion in the Middle East and Africa. The second millennium of the Common Era saw expulsion of Jews from every European country over that thousand years. Jews were told where to live, what professions to take, what spaces to occupy, what their names could be, who they could speak to. They were beaten, jailed, and murdered. They were blamed for plague, disease, war, and economic term-down. Jews were notoriously pictures of devils and demons throughout their European existence. Highlights of this misfortune include massacres in France, the Spanish Inquisition, the Paleas settlement forcing Jews into a sliver of stedels in the Russian Empire, the ensuing pogroms, and the Holocaust, our final solution. We are now 2% of the U.S. population, 0.2% of the world population. You tell me how we can be responsible for all the woes of the world. It wasn't much better here in the United States, that is, if you could get here. Jewish immigration policy was restrictive and quota-ridden. This included turning away ships from Europe during the Holocaust and sending Jews back to their deaths. Antisemitism unfortunately runs deep in America. At one point, Jews carried books with them around the country to know which businesses they could and could not go to. Here, Jews were kept out of colleges with notorious quotas, and the Ivy Leagues were novel enough to come up with their own filtering application to keep Jews out. Once they were in, they were provided with oppressive and prejudicial policies. Many left. Some were just flunked out for being Jewish, like what happened at Emory Dental School. We were kept out of businesses, companies, organizations, and government. The city I grew up in would not sell houses to Jews until, in most of the city, until the '70s. The city next door wouldn't sell the Jews at all until about the same time. The restriction of Jews from the American stage led to the formation of multiple motion-picture companies that we have seen today. They were successfully grown into an amazing empire, and then Jews were accused of exerting control over that industry. So why do people hate Jews? Here I am, Owen Zaret. I grew up sheltered from most of this. Private Jewish school, Jewish summer camps, a town that had actually overcome its antisemitic real estate practices to actually become quite Jewish, but I saw it every major holiday when we needed law enforcement at the synagogue. When I camp with other camps, they would call us antisemitic slurs. When I rode the bus home from my Jewish day school on the public school bus with my friend who wore yarmulke, the kids picked on him. Emerging from the shelter of a Jewish community, I was immediately exposed to a non-Jewish world, most basically the utter lack of acknowledgement of Judaism, its culture, its calendar. No one knew I was Jewish. Owen Zaret is a disguise for Owen Zaretzky. I got inside information to the mind of the public. I remember when a girl went to date me when she found out I was Jewish. Her parents wouldn't let her. When my chemistry classmate called the professor a dirty Jew for a bad grade, and my medical assistant talked about getting chewed down in a car purchase, I casually had to explain to them that I was Jewish. "Oh, you don't look Jewish?" I had no idea. Institutional antisemitism is not about someone necessarily calling you a dirty Jew. It's about them thinking it and constantly flying under the radar and leveraging difficult-to-prove, institutionally-controlled power dynamics. It's the college dean who's enforcing a subjective acceptance quota, or the other dean flunking Jewish students based on equally subjective or fixed tests, the country club who just doesn't meet the admission requirements, the job you either don't get or can never promote in because of some vague subjective reason, the government body where the representative is elected, but the other representatives prevent them from engaging or freeze them out. So when I decided to run for office, I was not naive to the fact that my Judaism would be on display, and it would be an issue at times, but I expected that there would be enough voices around me to speak up and speak out against any discrimination. The comments from the public were quite typical, ranging from the typical micro and passive-aggressive, "you don't look Jewish," "I had no idea," "you don't have a Jewish name," "oh, that's okay," to the more obvious, and the namesake of a book, "Jews don't count," or referring to me as having friends from New York as an obvious coded message for Jews, suggesting I both had money and was cheap, that I either was in control or seeking control, that I was an outsider, invader, and interloper. Not once or twice, but three times, a counselor debated my request for illegal accommodations to moving a meeting from coinciding with Yom Kippur, the day that Sandy Koufax went and pitched the World Series. We can move meetings for other reasons, but not for the high holiday of atonement for Jews around the world. We have a yearly Hanukkah event in town. This has been attended by a few counselors, but many never have attended. Someone even questioned the truth of the holiday in public at an event. Others simply wouldn't attend because I had hosted it organized. This followed year after year announcing the Jewish holidays to provide education to the city and the city failing to acknowledge them for the Jews in town, or scheduling other city events on those high holidays. Holocaust Memorial Day is ignored, Jewish American History Month as well. Just a few weeks ago, I urged the counselor to understand the gravity of the sharp rise in antisemitism and have heard from very few people. I feel I have experienced hypercriticism for opinions and statements that were not unlike those of my peers. I felt my participation has not been judged by professionalism or policy, but rather a personal commentary on me as an individual. I have expressed concern that I was treated differently than my peers. I sensed anger from my peers strictly from my commitment and participation to city events. I felt my participation in the local Jewish community was questioned, and I experienced language from someone else that was concerningly disrespectful to Jewish people and the Jewish community. It was confusing, it was discouraging, but it was also concerning, and most concerning to me was the refusal to have any dialogue around what I experienced, and what I experienced as anger and punishment in return for bringing these concerns forward. And I'm not saying this to shame anyone, this is just the experience I've personally had and how I experienced it. And I have questioned them all. Antisemitism is a disease like the flu that's pervaded our society for ages. So why do people hate Jews? I've had conversations with our Jewish community locally and beyond. Experiences range from feeling like the recipient of irrational and blind hatred, demonization, double standards, ostracization, erasure, hypercriticism, rumor-mongering, second-class citizenship, being dehumanized. We have been depicted throughout the ages as being the cause of social downturns. I talk to Jewish people regularly who feel that they are blamed for issues out of their control. We were depicted throughout the ages as devils in disguise. I talk to people who feel the same way, and I feel the same way. I can't escape centuries of indiscriminate hatred. My personal and professional experience has included most of these feelings. As a public figure, I feel that there has been distinct efforts to undermine or discredit my service to the community. Public smear campaigns, public messaging making concerning accusations. I wonder why it seems so easy for people to hate me. Is this part of public service, or is this part of being a Jew? Is it both? I've witnessed all this, I've pondered it, I've asked and pleaded to discuss this. Min haMeitzar Karatiah, from the depths I have called to people, I've told people honestly and vulnerably, this is evocative of historical and cultural trauma. They told me I was absurd. They tell me I deserve this. I feel like people do not want to discuss this. When you tell your Jewish colleague that he needs to disappear, or needs to go away, or be gotten rid of, you need to think about the images you are conjuring. And unfortunately for me and for many others, this is what it looks like to be a Jewish person, professional, public servant. You could be granted the job, gained admission, offered membership, or elected, but you won't necessarily be accepted. I'm not trying to center myself, this is just my experience, my experience and the backdrop of 15 million other Jews alive today. My story is the story of the Jewish people. I'm a data point, a sentence, a word, a piece of punctuation on a page in the history of Jews everywhere. To think that 100 years after my grandfather's family was the target of discrimination and murder by his government, I struggle to feel I experience the same here. murder by his government, I struggle to feel I experience the same here. I've told people I don't feel safe or welcome here, and I have to ask you why. Antisemitism is centuries old. East Hampton, Massachusetts, the United States can't magically escape it. We can't and we haven't, and that's why we need this resolution. Because even in 2023, we still have to think and behave differently around the Jews among us. When I initially wrote and submitted this, I had no idea that we would be in the midst of the worst state of antisemitism here and internationally since Nazi Europe. It sounds extreme, but it's true. Enough is enough. Never again. We all need to read and take into our hearts and work on the words that are written on this resolution. We need to change our perspectives, stand against Jewish hate, and stand against all forms of hate. Thank you. I can go ahead and read it unless you have any comments, Mr. President. I will proceed with reading the resolution in the form of a motion. Whereas the American Jewish experience is a story of faith, fortitude, and patriotism, and is connected to key tenets of American identity, and generations of Jewish people have come to this nation fleeing oppression, discrimination, and persecution in search of a better life for themselves and their children, and whereas these Jewish Americans have created lives for themselves and their families and played indispensable roles in our nation's civic and community life, making invaluable contributions to our nation through their leadership and achievements, despite enduring antisemitism that continues to this day, and whereas the founding principles of our country envisions freedom for all people from persecution and bigotry, whereas antisemitism is a century-old form of racism faced by Jewish people simply because they are Jews, characterized by blaming Jews as Jews when things go wrong, calling for aiding or justifying the killing or harming of Jews in the name of a radical ideology or extremist view of religion, or making mendacious, dehumanizing, demonizing, or stereotyped allegations against Jews, and whereas the Holocaust perpetrated by the Nazi regime murdered 6 million Jews, and was the culmination of nearly two millennia of persecution, marginalization, defamation, and murder carried out in the form of smear campaigns, expulsions, forced conversions, seizure and destruction of property, pogroms, and attempted genocide. Whereas white supremacists in the United States and Massachusetts have exploited and continue to exploit bigotry and hate for political gain, manifesting in a variety of forms, that targeting marginalized communities, including Jews of all cultural and ethnic backgrounds, as well as blacks, Latinos, Asian Americans, Pacific Islanders, and other people of color, as well as Muslims, Hindus, Sikhs, the LGBTQ+ community, immigrants, and others with verbal attacks, incitement, and violence, and whereas incidents of violence in synagogues in Pittsburgh, Poway, Porway, Colleyville have left the Jewish community feeling increasingly unwelcome, unsafe, and vulnerable in their sacred spaces, and whereas our Western Massachusetts community are not immune to violent acts of antisemitism, witness an attempt to place an explosive at a Jewish living center in Long Meadow in April 2020, and whereas white nationalists recently called for a day of hate against Jewish people in the US taking place on February 25th, 2023, and whereas in 2022, there were 3,697 incidents of antisemitism recorded in the United States, a historic high, a 36% increase from 2021, according to the ADL Audit of Anti-Semitic Incidents, with 465 occurring in Massachusetts, and whereas 589 anti-Semitic incidents took place in Jewish institutions, an increase of 12% from data collected in 2021, and whereas antisemitic assaults increased by 26% in '22 compared to the previous year, and assaults in 2021 were 138% higher than the rolling five-year average of antisemitic assaults, and whereas the FBI report of antisemitic hate crimes increased by 20% in 2021, and whereas in the last month, the United States has seen a many hundredfold percent increase in antisemitic incidents, and whereas there is an urgent need to ensure the safety and security of Jewish communities, including synagogues, schools, cemeteries, and other institutions, and whereas all Americans, people of all faiths and no faith, have a stake in fighting antisemitism, as all Americans have a stake in fighting every form of bigotry and hatred against people based on religion, race, gender identity, place of birth and origin, now therefore, be it resolved that the city council hereby rejects the perpetration of antisemitism and through anti-Semitic tropes, including the pernicious myth of dual loyalty and foreign allegiance, condemns anti-Semitic acts and statements as hateful expressions of intolerance that are contradictory to the values that define the people of the United States, and therefore, furthermore, calls on elected officials, faith leaders, and civil society leaders to use their platform to confront the reality of antisemitism, and to condemn and combat any and all manifestations of antisemitism, and to condemn and combat any and all denials and distortions of the Holocaust, and to promote Holocaust and antisemitism education, and furthermore, calls on social media platforms to institute stronger and more significant efforts to measure and address online antisemitism while protecting free speech, and finally, declares its commitment to ensuring the safety, security, and dignity of all American Jews in all aspects of their lives, including the workplace, college and university campuses, synagogues, and at home. These measures must reflect the full diversity of Jewish community in its entirety, and to aim to keep at-risk house of worship schools and community centers safe from terrorist attacks and other forms of antisemitic violence, and be it further resolved that East Hampton elected officials and community leaders be encouraged to sign on to the pledge to speak up against antisemitism at www.massachusettsagainstantisemitism.org, and be it further resolved that the City of East Hampton seeks to educate its residents of all ages about antisemitism through public events, workshops, school curricula, and other suitable means, with the aims of making our residents more knowledgeable on antisemitism, how it connects to racism and other forms of hate, and helping them understand that white supremacists racialize Jewishness, and be it further resolved that the City of East Hampton will make efforts to recognize Holocaust Remembrance Day, Yom HaShoah, and the gravity of that day, and be it further resolved that the City of East Hampton will make efforts to recognize Jewish American History Month, along with the acknowledgement of Jewish Americans in our country. Be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution be sent to the Community Relations Committee and other relevant community stakeholders requesting action points in order to educate its residents of all ages about antisemitism through public events, workshops, film screenings, and by other suitable means, and be it further resolved that the East Hampton Public Schools be urged to include education about antisemitism in DEI curricula, events, and messaging, and empower students to recognize and speak out when they witness antisemitism in all forms of hate and bias. The schools should moreover be urged to embrace the mandated state Holocaust and genocide education, offer robust curricula and educational opportunities, including having an adequate supply of resources addressing antisemitism and the Jewish American experience, as well as seek and offer training around the subject for staff as appropriate, and be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution be sent to State Representative Dan Carey, State Senator John Velas, I think he knows about it, US Representatives Richard Neal, US Centers Elizabeth Warren and Ed Markey, Congregations Be'Avab and A'Israel, the Jewish Federation of Western Mass, Massachusetts, and the Anti-Defamation League.
Second.
I have an motion and a second for to approve the resolution against antisemitism. Any further discussion? Counselor?
Riley.
Riley. Sorry.
So, you know, I just, not so much speaking towards the resolution, but speaking to you, Counselor Zaret. I know that I've been one of those people that's had your back. I've gone to your Hanukkah events. I've been downstairs in the basement when people have tried to sabotage you, invoking Hitler when there was nobody else around. It made me sick to know that you have to go through those kinds of things. But to hear your narrative prior to reading the resolution, I'm realizing that, you know, there's so much more of this inside you that I've never even thought to ask about. You know, I think when, when we have these sorts of shared adversaries, it's easy for marginalized people to forget about doing the most that they can to help out other marginalized people. I'm so caught up in homophobia and transphobia and what it means to take care of people like me, that I don't think that I've done the most that I can do to take care of you. And for that, I'm sorry. I will do better, and I will do better for all of you in this community. This is really raw stuff, and I think sometimes it's hard to stand up on these benches and shut off parts of ourselves to do the business, or to dissociate from what's going on in the community because it's a survival mechanism sometime. So I give you my word, I'm going to do the best that I can, and I'm going to continue to do better, and I'm sorry if you've ever felt that I wasn't there for you 100%. I will be going forward, so thank you.
Any other counsel?
I'm not sure how anyone could listen to tonight with our speakers. Each one of you, I thank you personally for sharing your stories, and I hope those stories get rebroadcasted, rebroadcasted, and told. Because each story helps to build the fabric of our community, helps people to understand one another, and I think, Counselor Riley, you hit on something when you say that we have to really step out outside of ourselves, no matter what group we feel ourselves akin with, whether it be a minority group, a majority group, or any group. Frankly, forget the groups. I think groups help to cause bullying. Frankly, let's say it, it's bullying. It's a form of bullying all the way around, and it starts with every level of in-and-out That is what we should commit ourselves to, to think about that, and take each step forward, listening to everyone's stories, helping others to feel comfortable with us, with Thank you so much.
Thank you. Counsel Derby?
Thank you, Mr. President. I don't have much that is eloquent to say. I think I'm still, I'm a little feverish, so forgive me if I don't speak as clearly as I might. You know, this process for me to be involved with Counselor Zaret, to be able to bring this forward and work on this in committee, has been a really interesting process for me because it affects me on a couple different levels. You know, one of the pieces of my heritage that, you know, is important to me and has kind of started to bubble back to the surface is, you know, the fact that, you know, I am Jewish and I'm not practicing, but I was, you know, my mom was raised Jewish, and, you know, like I was thinking last night after I, after our meeting with, you know, putting the final touches on the resolution about my Aunt Rose, and she made the best chicken soup, and her husband would talk about his escape from Eastern Europe, and I was a little kid and didn't really understand what that meant. And it kind of started to circle back to me to realize like what that means to my friends in this community, and what I can do to support and listen and be present for the people that are suffering right now, and that are grappling with these really complex issues, and, you know, then mixing in the historical perspectives is just, it becomes a very personal and important thing to be able to grapple with, you know. So again, like I said, I'm not exactly making sense, but I just wanted to say that, you know, I appreciate Counselor Zaret bringing this forward for my family, for the other families that are impacted by this, and I want to just be present and someone who can be an ally and support as we move forward. So, thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Derby. Any other counsel? I just want to add a few things before we vote. It's incredible that we're talking about this in 2023. It is. And I can tell you by my experience that I'm not Jewish, but I'm Latino, I have an accent, and I, yes, I look Latino. So no one can tell me, no, you don't look Latino. So I have, I'm Latino, and I know what is discrimination. But what I can understand is how humans cannot learn from history. We don't. I think it's time for everybody to start learning and respect humans just to be humans. Respect everybody is that simple. We don't have to agree with everything. I don't agree with my wife all the time, and we still, and we stood together after 30 years. But you know what? We respect each other, and I think that's the key. Me as a council president, I have a commitment with this group. It's a little concerning to hear some of your complaints. I would say that, at least from this council president, I would never treat anyone different. And I'm expecting that any council would treat anyone different. Now, that doesn't mean that we shouldn't respect boundaries, because everybody has boundaries, and we as a human beings, we should respect that too. But like I said, in 2023, the key words should be just respect. And the day that we're losing that is when we create all this. We're talking today about the Jewish community, and it's really important, really, really important, not to talk about it, to protect them too. You guys are welcome in this community, and it's our job, not just do you feel welcome, to make everybody to feel welcome in this community. But we as elected officials and leaders, we are going to work really hard to make you feel comfortable, welcome, and safe in East Hampton. Any other counsel before we take the vote? Counsel Zaret.
First of all, I wanted to thank everyone for their comments. I just did not want to forget the people that contributed significantly to this resolution, the Jewish Federation of Western Massachusetts and the Anti-Defamation League being major contributors, as well as the Jewish Equity Diversity and Inclusion Committee of the Federation, multiple Jewish and non-Jewish voices. I want to thank Counselor Denham, who came to Public Safety a couple meetings ago and gave us some real food for thought about some of the language here and how we could really make sure it was clear what we were trying to say, as well as really define some of the items we were asking for. And just in transparency too, we're the city council, we're not the school committee. There's action points in here that make suggestions to the schools, and they're just recommendations. I have had informal conversations with the superintendent and the current school committee chair and other members of the committee about what process they can feel open to if this is passed. It's just information to pass along. And to everyone that came and spoke or sat in solidarity, and to all the people who have lent their support along the way, I appreciate it. And thank you, Mayor, for what you had to say. I appreciate that. I think that's all. Thank you, Mr. President.
Barbara?
Deanna Rist.
Yes.
Owen Zaret.
Aye.
Connie Denham.
Aye.
Dylan Derby.
Aye.
Omar Gomez.
Aye.
JP Kozinski.
Aye.
Tom Peak.
Aye.
Brad Ratley.
Aye.
Motion passes. Does conclude?
Yes, we do have another meeting set for, I'm sorry, I had to come back to here. We don't have another meeting set for Public Safety. There's no pressing items, but I'll certainly open to considering something in December if we need to. So this concludes.
Thank you, Counsel Zaret. Appointments, Counsel Riley?
Thank you, Mr. President. So we have not met- So we have not met since our last meeting. So there is no report to give. I did notice, however, it looks like the request to review the appointment process would be set to expire before our next city council meeting. So can I request a 90-day extension in the form of a motion?
Second.
Can you repeat that again?
Right here.
Oh, 12/5.
Yeah, our next meeting is on the 6th.
Sorry, I'm thinking like we're in October, no, we're in November. Do we have a motion and a second to extend for 90-day request to review the mayor and city council appointments process? Any further discussion? Seeing on Barbara?
Owen Zaret?
Aye.
Connie Denham?
Aye.
Salem Derby?
Aye.
Omar Gomez?
Aye.
JP Kozinski?
Aye.
Tom Peak?
Aye.
Brad Riley?
Aye.
Dan Rist?
Aye.
And so the next meeting, because we do have new business that will come up. So that is going to be on Thursday, November 23 at 6:00 PM in Conference Room 2.
Is that Thanksgiving Day?
Thanksgiving.
Oh, is it Thanksgiving?
Yes.
I'll be here.
We can figure it out.
We'll have to figure that out then. Yep, totally spaced on that. Thank you. This concludes.
Thank you, Counsel Riley. Or then it's Counsel Derby?
Thank you, Mr. President. We were supposed to meet earlier tonight, but I am sick. So I was not able to get there. And we do have very few items on our agenda. One of those items is the item that is to look at the senior tax work-off to extend it beyond the three-year pilot program. And I believe that Counsel Riley has a motion that can bring us past that three-year pilot program. And I would imagine now is a good time for that.
Thank you, Counsel Derby. We have Cindy Terrell from the Council on Aging. I think this is a appropriate time for her to explain the council, how this been working and how is being needed for our community.
I'm Cynthia Terrell, Council on Aging Director. For the last two years, I came into the Senior Tax Workoff Program when the first pilot year was underway. Over the past three years, the duplicated count of people who have benefited from the program is approximately several dozen. The unduplicated count, I'm not sure of tonight. The departments that have been helped through the program include Parks and Rec, Public Safety, the Council on Aging, numerous offices at City Hall. New programs that have come on in the most recent of the three years are the schools. And then we also hope to bring on the library. The purpose of the program is to benefit the city in the expansion of its labor force beyond what it could otherwise afford to provide the city. It also creates a credit on taxes of those homeowners of their primary residence in East Hampton who are of a certain age and below a certain income limit, which is the moderate, the Springfield area moderate, low moderate income limit, which includes most people of the city would then be eligible if they are of age and this is their primary residence. The Council on Aging has benefited tremendously and could not operate as it does with the amount of hours that it has. Without this program, we would have to scale back a little bit. And what we're doing tonight is we're asking to continue this program. It was approved by city council. And this is simply to clarify that it's approved for beyond three years. Currently, there are 14 people just finished the third year of this program. And typically, we would right now have people apply to begin work January 1 or shortly after that. So we're hoping to open the applications if city council approves continuing this program. I'll just put in a pitch for that now in case you do approve it, that right now people could apply the minute city council approves this for a month. And then I will review the applications. The process for this is that people can apply. They're not guaranteed a position. There are not that many positions available. And people's skills and experience and capabilities have to be matched so that they can serve the city and improve the city's accomplishment of the city's goals. In addition, the credits, just so people understand, when they work in the beginning, January or thereabouts of 2024, they won't receive credit until the following tax year. So that would be tax year 2025. And so typically, people before they get their first tax bill would see that credit in the future now that these things are, this is the third year and things are running smoothly. That's how that works. Any questions from counselors?
Counsel Peak?
Sure, thank you. In general, would you say at the current setup that we have, are there folks who are applying, who have skills that would be a good match? But like, I guess what I'm saying is, are there people being turned down because there's not an adequate number of like slots available for this? Or is it something where the cap is really the number of positions that are available within the city? Or are there open things and there's not even enough people?
I can clarify that.
Yeah.
So the city has set aside 20 slots, first of all. There is a maximum because that has to come out of the overlay account. And so it does cost the city to provide these slots, $1,500 per slot. Are there 20 positions? No, we still have not achieved 20 positions, which is why I've done two things to try to accomplish that. I've managed to increase the number of positions that the Council on Aging can offer. And also to bring on the library now that more than half of its operations budget is funded by the city and there would be a municipal benefit to putting people at the library, shelving books. So that's the first point is, do we even have enough jobs? I hope that we get to 20 jobs. Are people battering down the doors to apply? No, typically, we have not had that many people apply because these things take time for people to incorporate into their lives, understand how it works and then decide if they can, if they, if they want to do it. Then we have an issue, which is the population. This is meant to serve, often cannot physically or cognitively or skill-wise do the jobs that are on offer. And many of them can do the jobs that are on offer. So some people will apply and there is no match for them. But really, not that many people have been turned away or people have decided they didn't want to do it once they heard what the jobs were that were on offer. And like I said, most people do qualify financially. However, if there is somebody living in the home who is partly the owner and is, their income is also counted. So if a mother and daughter live in the same home, they might be over income. Did I answer your question?
Yes, thank you.
Any other question from any counselor? Seeing on, before taking the motion, I just want to explain to the public that we had for the past three years a pilot program, basically doing the same. What we're doing today is making that program permanent with this motion. But this been working for three years. I just want to, do you want to add something?
Oh, I'd love to.
Counsel Kozinski?
This has been a project dear, near and dear to my heart and I think to the hearts of many of our citizens who respect our seniors and the community and the benefit that can be had by the combination of the two groups, the city and the seniors. The legislature, in their good wisdom, has increased the amount of money from $1,500 to a new amount. So that will affect the budget overlay account that has to be tapped. So there will be additional funds if we're to maintain 20 slots or increase the slots as needed. I want to thank the mayor, Mayor LaChappelle. You can take a bow for this. Because it's not every mayor who could have the vision to, I think, help this program go through. And I am personally very appreciative of that. And I know the other members of the committees that have worked on this very hard do also. Cynthia Terrell, thank you so much for your embracing the program. And I think if we continue this effort, we'll be helping both the city and our seniors tremendously. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Kozinski. Counsel Riley?
Yeah, so just a quick comment as well. Counsel Kozinski, you thanked everybody except yourself. I remember when I first came on to the city council and learning about what was happening through the Senior Tax Workoff Committee. And, you know, you gave the committee reports. And when I, when I was hearing about the work that you were doing, I thought this is good governance, it's compassionate governance. And it made me feel like, okay, this is a space that I can work in as well. So, you know, in my career, I talk about this program all the time with people in different states or at the federal level, local governments, as an example of something that you can do that works really well and shows that you care about people. So I know you played a huge leadership role in that as well. So thank you. All right, so then I move that the East Hampton City Council establish a work-off program by accepting Mass General Law, Chapter 59, Section 5K for seniors.
Second.
I have a motion and a seconds to establish a work-off program by accepting MGL, Chapter 59, Section 5K. Any further discussion? Seeing on Barbara?
Connie Denham?
Aye.
Salem Derby?
Aye.
Omar Gomez?
Aye.
JP Kozinski?
Aye.
Tom Peak?
Aye.
Brad Riley?
Aye.
Dan Rist?
Aye.
Motion passes. Counsel Derby?
Thank you, Mr. President. We, right now, we only have one other thing on our agenda, which is to look at the electronic messaging signs. I'm going to confer with my other members and see if we can get a meeting soon to discuss that. And I don't believe I need any extensions on any of that. This concludes.
You need 90-day extension.
For which?
For the signs.
Oh, do I?
By December 1st.
Okay, well, let's get an extension for that. 90 days, please, in the form of a motion.
I have a motion and a seconds to extend the review of the let sign, the electronic message center and sign ordinance for 90 days. Any further discussion? Seeing on Barbara?
Salem Derby?
Aye.
Omar Gomez?
Aye.
JP Kozinski?
Aye.
Tom Peak?
Aye.
Brad Riley?
Aye.
Dan Rist?
Aye.
Motion passes. Counsel Derby?
This concludes.
Thank you, Counselor. Property, Counsel Kozinski? Thank you, Counselor. Rules, Counsel Rist?
No report. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. New business. Counsel Derby?
Thank you, Mr. President. So let me just grab this really quick. And so we have a new business to establish a pickleball donation account. And that is a request for immediate action.
And we have the motion here. I'm going to let Counsel Rist to read, okay?
Okay.
A motion to approve and establish a pickleball donation account pursuant to the provisions of Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53A. Approval is hereby given to establish the account for the purpose of receiving funds designated for the, I'm sorry, pickleball donation account. The date executed is November 7, 2023 and approved by Mayor LaChappelle.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to establish a pickleball donation account. Any further discussion? Seeing on Barbara?
Omar Gomez?
Aye.
JP Kozinski?
Aye.
Tom Peak?
Aye.
Brad Riley?
Aye.
Dan Rist?
Aye.
Connie Denham?
Aye.
Salem Derby?
Aye.
Omar Gomez?
Aye.
Motion passes. Counsel Derby?
We have the city council president's reappointment to the CPA committee.
And I believe that that is just something that you are going to do and I don't have to move that to committee, right? Yes, we have to send it to the appointments committee.
Yep.
Oh, appointments committee, okay. I move to send it to appointments committee.
Second.
I have a motion and a seconds to send the city council president reappointment from the CPA committee to appointments committee. Any further discussion? Seeing on Barbara?
Tom Peak?
Aye.
Brad Riley?
Aye.
Dan Rist?
Aye.
Owen Zaret?
Aye.
Connie Denham?
Aye.
Salem Derby?
Aye.
Omar Gomez?
Aye.
JP Kozinski?
Aye.
Tom Peak?
Aye.
Brad Riley?
Aye.
Dan Rist?
Aye.
Owen Zaret?
Aye.
Connie Denham?
Aye.
Salem Derby?
Aye.
Omar Gomez?
Aye.
JP Kozinski?
Motion passes. Counsel Derby?
We have a request from Counselor Denham to review council rules regarding city council meetings. I guess I would move to send that to Rules and Government Relation Committee.
Okay.
We have a motion and a seconds to move an item to the Rules Committee. Any further discussion? Counselor Riley?
Point of clarification, am I allowed to ask for an elaboration on this item? Or is it only the motion to move it?
If the question is related to why we are moving it to the committee, yes.
Okay, then, so then I would...
Because the motion is just to move this item to the committee, that's why.
Yes, so then I would please respectfully object that it does not meet the criteria for city council rule 5C. I feel that the new business item is too vague. And I think that when we have language that suggests changing the rules of the city council without stating specifically what it is, I think that the ramifications for not being clear are too high. Because there's a lot of things in that document. And I think just for the sake of city council and public transparency that being more clear would be helpful.
Counsel Denham, because we are moving this to, and this is coming from you, that's why I'm asking you, why we should be moving this to, because that the motion, why we have to move this to Rules Committee? Why we should be moving this to Rules Committee because this is your item?
Sure, so I think as we saw this evening, I think that we live in a very volatile political climate. And the goal is to be able to review city council meeting procedures, rules, et cetera, so that we are making sure that we meet the needs of the community. And I think that we often review procedures, we often review rules. And so it's just a general, we would like, or I would like to review those. And in terms of potentially offering changes, I'm being transparent of like, there might be things that we should change. And so I'm not looking for a specific change per se, but I think that there may be changes that come from that. And so, like I said, I think that we live in an incredibly volatile time. And I think that it is imperative that as a council, we meet this moment. And I think we saw that on full display this evening.
Counsel Rist?
From a point of view of procedure, I have no objection as the Rules Chair for many years that this be sent to committee. The counselor is asking that the agenda item be looked at if you look at what her statement says in the packet. Not all rules, just agenda. And I feel that it can be dealt with as it is written. We're sending it to committee. It's not something that's coming back to the council. And just as a side note... And I feel that it can be dealt with as it is written. We're sending it to committee. It's not something that's coming back to the council. And just as a side note, I will not be dealing with this this term. If the counselors want to have this dealt with this term, Counselor Kozinski and Counselor Denham can have their own meeting. But I do not feel that this council, which is absent two new members, should change rules at the end of the term. We should change rules at the beginning of a term, and this is a, could be major rule changes. So this is a personal thing for me. I won't be calling any meetings, but that doesn't, but I cannot act for the full council. If the other members of the committee want to have a meeting, they're welcome to do so, but I recommend that this be dealt with at the next term.
I just want to remind counselors that we have a motion to move this to...
You are correct.
Counselor Sarret.
So somehow I agree with actually everyone who's spoken so far, because my initial...
That's good or bad?
No, it's good, because this is what's about collaboration. When I first read this, I was also concerned about if this met the criteria of Rule 5C. My feeling is that as it's written, in terms of approving this to be sent to committee, as it's written, if it's strictly just a review, then I think that, then that meets the criteria. If there's going to be, if, if the, and if the purpose of the review is to gain ideas about changes, I think those would need to be a separate item, because I think that piece is too vague. If it's just a review and transparency about the rules, I have, I don't have an issue with it. I did initially, but the more I think about if it's really literally just a review and having a trans, and actually, thank you, having a transparent discussion publicly about these items, I think that's fine. I think if there is recommended changes, I think that it would have to be a more robust recommendation, and my assumption would be that those would come back through that process, so.
Counselor Derby?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. I guess, yeah, so I'm not sure the clarification clarified anything for me. So I think my only, my only hang-up on this is that I'm not, I really don't know what we're trying to review, and I know that we're looking at sending this to committee, but I just, you know, I, I think that's kind of what Rule 5C is, is for us to be clear about, and so for transparency, for everybody to be clear about what we would be looking at. I mean, there's a lot of rules, I, like, it almost seems like there is some rule that, or there's some set of rules that might be reviewed, but I don't know what those are. So I guess I'm a little confused about what we would actually be reviewing. I mean, is this a blanket, we're reviewing every rule, and then, you know, coming back with recommendations? And again, I know that this is getting out of the purview of, you know, sending this to committee, but I'm just, I guess I'm, it's not super clear to me.
Thank you, Counselor Peak, and then you, Peak was first.
Thank you, Mr. President. So I've generally been a five, I think me and Counselor Sarret, a couple of people have been sort of 5C sticklers over time, and I just want, because not everyone's been here the whole time, I just wanted, there's, one of the reasons why we were concerned about, why this is concerned, early on in the time after we were elected and a couple other people were elected, there was a thing that happened in a few committees where someone would say, instead of a proposal, there would just be a problem. This street has, like, whatever, there's a parking or pedestrian safety issue on this street, so that would go to public safety, or it would be something else in another committee. And then a fully formed workshop proposal would come out of that committee that we'd vote on, but there was never a point where the public, you know, where it would, it made it into an agenda packet for the public to be notified that that was happening. I want to contrast that with what we did with our charter, with our charter review or our ordinance review, where what we were doing is, we had a meeting, we sat down, we talked about all these things in a transparent place where people can be part of the conversation, but then any proposed amendments to that ordinance or to that rule were then coming, like, were then being introduced as separate amendments to be discussed and to be announced by the public. So as long as that's what's going on here, I'm totally comfortable with it. My only concern would be a thing where a review happens without, like, without a specific proposal, and then specific proposals come out of committee. That, that would be concerning to me. It doesn't sound like that's what happens, is happening here, so I'm fine with it, but I'm glad we had this conversation.
Before taking, Counselor Kozinski, I have a recommendation if Counselor Denham want to do it. Counselor Rist already said that he's not going to, not going to do this until the next term, so the new council is going to do it yet. We have another meeting. By the way, we have three more, two more meetings after this one. We have a section in our agenda, say, all business impending. We can leave it there. You can introduce a letter with a little more specific than why you're sending this, why you want to see this in rules, and then we vote next time, if you're okay with it.
I like that. So you're...
First, Counselor Kozinski was waiting.
I was going to say that I think everyone has valid points on, on the proposal, as you noted, and it sounded that we could send this to a committee as a study, to appoint the committee, that committee being the Rules Committee, to study the matter of our rules and report back to the full council, and then out of that report, the council could either select, reject, or send pieces of it to a committee, perhaps back to the rules, perhaps to another committee, and then it come back to the council, and therefore, if it follows that process, it's public, and people have a chance to see what we're talking about.
Counselor Rist?
Well, forgot what it, no. I do agree with you, Counselor. What you're saying is, Mr. President, is to put this, accept this as continuing on the agenda as a whole business, and perhaps Counselor Denham can add a clarifying comment if she chooses, and I agree with that. I think that'll solve the problem of...
I think so, too.
Of other, there's questions, so why not do it that way?
Counselor Sarret?
Yeah, because I want to add that I actually really appreciate this. I've questioned, I've had similar questions over the years, and I think that this is very valuable, and so really making it clear for us and for the public exactly what we're doing, I think would be helpful. So I, I think that's a good collaborative effort to try to clarify this.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, we're going to keep it on the agenda to the old business so that we, Counselor Denham can send us a letter for the next package, and then we move it to Rules if the council believe that we'll need it. But I need who make the second and then the motion to withdraw it.
I seconded, I withdraw the second? I believe I did.
And then I have, I have to withdraw my objection?
No.
No, no, the motion.
Okay.
Oh, Barbara.
I think that was...
Who make the motion?
Salem and...
Oh, Salem, yeah.
Home and Dan.
I did, yeah, that was me.
You have to withdraw the motion.
I withdraw my motion.
Thank you. And Counselor Rist?
Yes, Mr. President, we have an interdepartmental transfer. I will make this a first reading. The amount requested is $12,848 to be transferred from the Reserve Fund, $12,848 to be transferred to the Sealer of Weights and Measures, $12,848, for the following purpose, to pay the city of Northampton for contracting, contracting out John Fray, the Sealer of Weights and Measures. I'm sorry, I move that we send this to Finance Committee for review and that a public hearing be set for this for the first meeting in December.
Second.
I have a motion and a seconds to set the transfer of $12,848 to pay the city of Northampton, Sealing and Weight and Measure contract, and to schedule a public hearing for the first meeting in December, at 6:15 in the chambers. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Barbara.
Brad Riley.
Aye.
Dan Rist.
Aye.
Owen Zera.
Aye.
Connie Denham.
Aye.
Salem Derby.
Aye.
Omar Gomez.
Aye.
JP Kozinski.
Aye.
Tom Peak.
Aye.
Motion passes. I will take a motion to adjourn.
So moved. Second.
I have a motion and a second to adjourn, Barbara.
Dan Rist.
Aye.
Owen Zera.
Aye.
Connie Denham.
Aye.
Salem Derby.
Aye.
Omar Gomez.
Aye.
JP Kozinski.
Aye.
Tom Peak.
Aye.
Brad Riley.
Aye.
Motion passes. The meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everybody. Thank you. Certainly feel better.
Thank you.
See you soon.